We have a public hearing regarding the proposed changes of the zoning for the solar farms. Is there anybody who wants to speak to the public hearing of the solar farms? Again, I'll ask if there's anybody here in regard to want to speak towards the solar farms and the zoning. Last call. Can you get a motion to close the public hearing? Billy?
I'll second.
All is a favor. So, roll call. I'll do my own, so Mayor Steve is present. Counselor Scott?
Yep.
Counselor Silman?
Present.
Counselor Penella?
Present.
Counselor Lane? You see Counselor Lane on there? We got a presence. Counselor Thompson?
Present.
Counselor Carpenter?
Present.
Counselor Beckwood?
Present.
Counselor Michael?
Present.
All right, stand for the super five. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We get a moment of silence and reflection for all the suffering and the difficulties that we're having in our community and with the sickness and illness that we have. I appreciate that. Thank you. I want to thank the fire hall for having us here today. Chief Freeman has a couple announcements he'd like to make as us being guests here. But I appreciate the firefighters and for cleaning this up. The idea of us covering these different areas is to coat all the different buildings that we have. We could spread out a little bit in some of these areas and be able to have a live meeting. And also for the new counselors and some of the others as well to tour the buildings and see what our facilities are. And invite the public as well to see what we're all about and try to get the inner workings of what they have. Chief Freeman, thank you.
Mayor, thank you. Welcome everybody to the Portland Fire Department Headquarters Fire Station. We've done a few things here to try to make this work like the mayor says. A couple things, we'll wear masks throughout the building. If you go anywhere in the building, please wear a mask. Our staff is wearing masks all the time now with the uptick in the pandemic concerns. In the event of an emergency in the building, i.e. the fire alarm went off of some sort inside the building, we'll exit to the front door or the back door and then we'll just leave and then the trained firefighters will figure out what's going on and then they'll advise us to come back in. In the event there's an alarm for emergency for the staff to go on it, there's going to be a bell, there's going to be noise, there's going to be loud. And you just have to work through it. The staff will go and do what they need to do. It'll be loud for a brief minute. Mayor will have to stop the meeting. Things will quiet back down. Then they'll continue on with the meeting. So just be aware of that. If we ask you to leave, that's how we do it. But I hope you have a great meeting and if there's anything you need, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Thank you. Proclamations. We have swearing in of the city fire police and board of engineers officers. Those officers step forward. Danny Reynolds? Okay, so he's not at that time. All right, so if you want to step up, Kristen? So I'll do Kristen first. I'm going to repeat after me. With your right hand, I, Kristen Gregory,
I, Kristen Gregory,
do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of,
that I will faithfully discharge the duties of,
Vice President of B O E Officers,
Vice President of B O E Officers,
and also Secretary of B O E Officers,
and also Secretary of B O E Officers, and Fire Police.
Fire Police. Okay, thank you for that. Scott Fairbanks, right?
Yeah.
Okay, repeat after me. I, Scott Fairbanks.
I, Scott Fairbanks.
Do solemnly swear that,
Do solemnly swear that,
I will support the Constitution of the United States,
I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of,
I will faithfully discharge the duties of,
of treasure for the B O E Officers.
of treasure for the B O E Officers.
That's it. No, that's it. Okay, hi, Billie Sue Fairbanks.
Hi, Billy Sue Fairbanks.
Hi, Billy Sue Fairbanks.
Do solemnly swear that,
Do solemnly swear that,
I will support the Constitution of the United States,
I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of,
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Fire Police.
Fire Police. Thank you very much. All right, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good day, Billy.
Proclamations. I recognize the city officials for years of service. You know, we've had a change of responsibilities and a change of leadership here. And I don't want to go that without recognizing the past administration and their leadership and what has brought us to what we are today. It all is a good, positive movement forward and we need to keep it that way. So Mayor Tobin, Counselor Adams, Counselor Bennett, Counselor Kaitler, and Counselor Chapman, I want to appreciate your years of service that you've given to all of us and giving up from your family time and giving those good items that have made us to where we are today. And ratified in the fire department's contract, for example, was in that past administration. I'm sure that we wouldn't have some of this what we have today, but thank you for that. The privilege to the floor. Public comment section. We have one person signed up and that's Mr. Jerry Rosario. You can go up to the podium here, please.
So the first thing I want to say tonight is, Alderman, I know you to be a good, honest, smart man. My son's a really good friend to this son and I expect you'll do a very good job with the city. So I just want to say that. Mr. Steve, or Mayor Steve, it's going to get hard for me to say that first. Mayor Steve, I think you're the right man for this job. And I think you're several years late, but I think you have tremendous problems in the city that have to be addressed. And I think you're the right guy to fix the city. I know that you have a lot of your plate. But I want you to remember that I have a lot to say about a lot of issues in the city. And I'm going to give you the time and space you need before I do. But several of the things that I want addressed by Alderman and by you and the city include the money that was missing from the downtown partnership, or the downtown partnership took from the downtown music series. And, you know, because there were city officials involved and relatives of city officials in the cover-up. And I have all the information for everybody here that I'll put together at some later point when you have time. I want to address the Mark Pace case. Mark Pace, Judge Siriyo just ruled that the case would not be dismissed. And at the last moment, the city filed an appeal. And it's important for the city to finally understand that the grandfather date is in fact linked to the 78. And we have to fix problems in the zoning department. And I look forward to working with anybody or everybody. There are, the one problem I think that we've had over the last 12 years is there's an ad hoc housing committee various people sit on and it's closed to most people. And they have driven the direction of the city as far as zoning goes. And I believe it's important that either we expand and allow open meetings and open conversations from other people or we disband that housing unit because I'm unsure if it's really helped the city. Down the road and we'll discover what I'll have to say about that matter. There are other things that we can get into, but I won't. But I do want you to, I want everybody to know that I'm not going away because Brian Tobin did. There are quite a few things that I need to have looked at and discussed and possibly fixed. I appreciate your time and I wish everybody well. I hope the city can move forward and do a good job. Thank you.
Mayor's report. On the mayor's report, I just want to touch base. It certainly both feed in and going at everything in a positive manner. We've got some great department heads and some great staff that we're working with to try to make these things happen. And I look forward to making this, working with the council and making things work together. I just want to notify that our next meeting will be at 6:00 PM at the Water Works. It's in the back building at the Water Works. So Mr. Doby and his company will be our, will be their guests at that meeting. And so we can see our new upgrades. We've done an investment of a lot of money to that upgrade that previous council that we mentioned before. And we get a good view, a tour of what that is and what goes on in that area as well. So they two have a similar bay as this that we'll be able to meet in there. So I hope to see everybody there at 6:00 PM on that next meeting on the 18th. Ward reports. We're all kind of convolved here, but we'll start with Ward 1 if we can.
It's quite Ward 1.
Okay, Ward 2?
Well, I just want to say I'm really pleased to be here with the new council. I love that the mayor has chosen to have the first few meetings in different areas of the city, just as Mary Leonard did during her tenure as mayor. The second ward has problems with people parking on the sidewalks and going the wrong way, particularly on Clayton Ave. This isn't, this hasn't been so bad the past couple of weeks, but I want to emphasize it's not just residents who are distracted, it's their guests and also delivery people. So that's become a little bit of an issue. We're dealing with the noise problem. The police have been very helpful with that in the second ward. And let's see, oh, I've also heard from people who are pleased that the city's moving forward with the Parker School project. So pretty good stuff in the second ward.
Ward 3?
Well, I just have to say I'm honored to be a part of this group. And I am going to work in a bipartisan fashion, moving forward. We want to make not only the third ward better, but also the city itself. And I encourage my constituents who may be watching tonight to definitely call and/or email me. And I will get back to you within 24 hours. And I want to be here for everybody. And I'm just again so honored to be here. And I thank you.
Again, in the spirit of being virtual and live, we have, our fourth ward is on Zoom because she was unable to make it due to personal reasons, but do you have anything to add? Ward 4 report? Patricia can hear him?
I can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor and I, to be a part of this group, whatever it is I could be there, we're continuing. The fourth ward is going to quiet because the college is having session right now. So the tripartites, there's less than a great deal. I too will be representing the fourth ward, but all of the people in fourth ward and all of the people of this city importantly, especially my lady. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Fifth ward.
There are a couple of things that have taken place already in this ward, such as building complaints calls regarding some things that residents are experiencing. But also there's some trash in front lawn areas and that is a concern that's been fielded. On a positive note, some of the youth have commented on, they're excited to still see lights up in the community, holiday lights, and that gives off a warm feeling in the neighborhood. And so, other than that, it's quiet in the fourth.
Thank you. Sixth.
I'll call it the sixth. I want to thank the code department, Roy and Tommy for being proactive down on Front Street. We have an issue down the lawn, trash on the lawn down there. That's been ongoing for seven years now. They've been very proactive and I like their consistent look at it down there and keeping these people in court and putting that forward. The water issue, I don't think the matter for helping us out down in the morning side, water issue. We're having flooding issues. We're also having issues with erosion on tap near the river. We're going to have lots of constituents down there and thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Seventh. I'll quiet this up. Eighth.
First I, first I want to start out is, this is my 19th year, city council. I've worked with several mayors now. I've had the opportunity to work with Scott here for the last couple of days. And I'm very impressed with what I've seen already. I don't expect anything else from him. I've known Scott for 18-plus years. His choice of individuals to serve along with him. I've known him for a long time. And being, that'll be in City Hall more often. I get to stop by and see Roy and Tom more often because I can stay abreast on my code issues in my ward. I just have two to speak about. One is the unsightly container that was identified on Randall Street, Esping, taking care of. And I'm also working with DPW on another issue that's been ongoing and will be probably ongoing through probably the next several meetings. But I want to thank all of you that have served with me in the past. And I want to bring, welcome all you newcomers out of ward. It'll be a pleasure working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. So finance report. That one's on me currently. We'll talk about it later, but we're looking for the finance. One of the, our finance reports will be once a month. It'll be the first meeting of every month. So that's a little different than in the past as you'll see our resolutions are as well. The items we have that was given were the, our Portland real acquisition program for WeGo Street, Clinton Ave. So you'll see all the reports of that funds and how those funds are extended. You also see the year-to-date, which is the end of last year theoretically finances. So from this point on, you'll see 2022 on the next meeting, at the beginning of next month, which will show Januaries, and then et cetera. There's obviously some things that need to be closed out on that budget that you'll see. There's some holes and some negatives that we will address. And I'll hopefully have a better report for you on that when I get my arms around that a little bit further. Does anybody have any questions on financials or the financial report? Approval of minutes. Anybody have any recollections on that, especially the old committee members? Anything they have to add or delete from that?
Move.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
So move.
Move? Can I get a second? I'll second. Carpenter, thank you. All is a favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I shouldn't be doing roll call. I'll wait for Andy to do that. And we'll fix that here shortly, okay? So agenda item number one, appoint city clerk. Resolve is that the Portland Common Council does hereby affirm the mayor's appointment of Andrew Jewitt to serve as a city clerk. That, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Can I get a motion? Mr. Beckwood, second. Mr. Carpenter. Roll call vote. Mr. Scott? Aye. Ms. Selman?
Aye.
Ms. Penella?
Approved.
Aye.
Ms. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
Mr. Beckwood?
Aye.
Mr. Michael?
Aye.
Mr. Jewitt, can you come up to get sworn in, please? I, Andrew Jewitt.
I, Andrew Jewitt.
Do solemnly swear that,
Do solemnly swear that,
I will support the Constitution of the United States,
I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and the Constitution of the State of New York,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the city clerk,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city clerk, the city reporter.
Agenda item number two, appoint corporation counsel. Be it resolved?
Motion.
Oh, I need a motion. Mr. Beckwood, Mr. Michael will second. Be it resolved?
Resolve that the Portland Common Council does hereby affirm the mayor's appointment of Arthur John Meldrum to serve as corporation counsel. I'll call the roll. Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Silman?
Aye.
Councilmember Penella?
Aye.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Michael?
Aye.
Motion carries. If he is not here, I'll swear to him tomorrow. Agenda item number three, appoint acting mayor. Can I get a motion?
I so move.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Selman. I want to look at, and Mr. Scott, a second. I want to look at this end of the table. Be it resolved?
Resolve with Thomas Michaels to hereby affirm his acting mayor for the city of Portland. I'll call the roll. Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Silman?
Aye.
Councilmember Penella?
Aye.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Michael?
Aye.
I think we got a conflict. Just, I just want to say something. You know, I invite all the councilmembers in, but Councilman Michael's has been in the office for the last two days with me. And we've had, yesterday it was 7:00. By the time we get out, and he's sitting with me with many meetings and we got to swear at a couple of police officers, which was a privilege. We had the eye-opening and it was, and well, and I offer that to anybody. The door is always open and you can sit and follow along and we'll do it. Because I think it's an important part to see what's going on in the day-to-day. But it was very positive. It was great to have somebody by my side. It was awesome. So thank you for that. I'm excited to have your 18-plus years of experience to help us understand why things are sometimes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four, designate bank depositaries for 2022. Can I get a motion? Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Beckwood, second. Any discussion? Resolve?
Resolve that all financial institutions are authorized with set purpose. N B T Bank, J P Morgan Chase Bank, N A. M and T Bank, Hopkins Trust Company. And be it further resolved that collateral agreements, municipal funds protection, and bank acknowledgements of the understanding of New York State Municipal Finance Law be established with set banks during the term of this agreement, which will be for a period not to exceed December 31st, 2024.
Any other discussion? All is a favor? Oh, we got a roll call. Sorry, go ahead, Andy.
I'll call the roll. Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Silman?
Aye.
Councilmember Penella?
Aye.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Michael?
Aye.
Agenda item number five, designate signatories.
Resolve that the city council does hereby authorize and approve the above-named individuals to serve as signatories for the city of Portland subject to applicable charter in New York state laws. Those names are Scott, Steve, mayor, Thomas Michaels, acting mayor.
Can I get a motion?
I have a question.
Yeah, take a motion first. I should have done that first. You have a motion? Beckwood, second. Carpenter, go ahead. Question?
You guys are on. Is everybody else going to be off?
Yeah, it starts over. Yes. As of now, it's going to be, eventually it'll be the finance, but right now we don't have that, so.
I'm just making sure the ones that were prior, whatever it is, doesn't matter, but they're off when you guys are on.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah. Any other questions? Are we still sticking to the two, two secretaries on the other item? Yeah, okay.
I'll call the roll. Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Silman?
Aye.
Councilmember Penella?
Aye.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Michael?
Aye.
Agenda item number six, designate official newspapers. Can I get a motion?
I so move.
Second. Second, Scott. Here, resolve?
Resolve that the Portland Standard, published by the Portland Standard Newspaper and the Portland Area Tribune, be and hereby ours designated as the official newspaper purely representing the Portland Common Council for the period of January 1, 2022 through December 31st, 2024.
Roll call?
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Silman?
Aye.
Councilmember Penella?
Aye.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Michael?
Aye.
Agenda item number seven, reappoint zoning officer. Can I? Can I get a motion? Mr. Carpenter, second. Mr. Beckwood? Need discussion? Yes, question?
In the bag, it didn't see credentials from a, who's sworn an application from Mr. Davis. I saw those from Mr. Parker.
Oh, this is for the zoning officer. That's, that's a word of appeal. But that's, yeah. That should have been submitted, but I'm not sure where that is. Did you get that, Deb?
Got it.
Okay. So, so this is for Bob Ray. Or read the result.
Resolve that the Portland Common Council does hereby affirm the mayor's appointment of Robert Ray as his zoning officer.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Call the roll. Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Selman?
Aye.
Councilmember Penella?
Aye.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels?
Aye.
Agenda number eight, please note, type the graphical error that it's the seven again, but this is number eight. Appoint members of the zoning board of appeals. Motion? Carpenter, Mr. Michaels. Now we want the discussion.
Yeah, already noted, just looking for credentials. It looked like Mr. Parker supplied Mr. Davis's tenant. Wasn't sure if others had concerns regarding that.
Okay. Not sure what happened to the application, but we can get that to, to them.
Have you been looking at all of Scott?
As far as the application? Yes.
And if you want to speak on his behalf?
Yeah, I can speak on his behalf.
That's all.
So, so.
That would have postponed it.
Yeah, so he's, so he's a architect by trade. So they thought we'd, to fill up that spot in the ZBA, which is my vacancy of that spot, would be to have that, somebody in the field that would have a little bit more knowledge in architecture to do that. And so I thought that would be the appropriate one.
Can I ask whether there are any more openings on the ZBA?
Not currently, no. And there's none on the planning either.
I'm just, I have a neighbor who.
I'm sorry, I have to repeat that?
I have a neighbor, you know, Tom, who had been on the ZBA and would like to serve again.
Okay. Yeah, Tom was a great Larson. Tom Larson was a great help. And certainly we can entertain him for some other opening when we have it.
Yeah.
There are some terms expiring.
Keep him in because he's very interested in the area.
Okay, thank you for that. And that's the topic of discussion later from others' appointments that we have to do as well, that it would be nice to be able to have that. Any other questions? Did that answer your question? Are you okay with that? Yes. Let it go for the first one. I'm sorry?
We'll let it go this time.
I, I, I know he filled it out, but I did talk to him about that. He did fill it out. I'm not sure what happened. So, roll call.
Resolve that the common council does hereby affirm the appointments of Kyle Davis and Raymond Parker to the zoning board of appeals for a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Now call the roll. Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Selman?
Aye.
Councilmember Penella?
Aye.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels?
Aye.
I believe Mr. Parker is in the audience. Is he? Yeah, can you come up, please? We'll swear you in. I also want to note that Mr. Parker was a past clerk and he's been stupendous on helping Mr. Jewitt adjust to this. So thank you for that. Appreciate that, everybody. If you could raise your right hand and you know how to do this better than I do. So, I raise Parker.
I raise Mr. Parker.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Of the ZBA board.
Of the ZBA board.
All right, perfect. Thank you. You're signing your rap. Item number nine, again in the correction. Amend the 2022 budget and authorize the encumbrance of funds from the 2021 budget for the demolition of a city-owned property. Can I get a motion?
I so move.
Second, Mr. Scott? Any questions?
Yes. Ben offered, did we bid with a sermon or?
Yes, it has, but we can, let's, this is, oh, I'm sorry. He has a question for you. Want to make sure that was put out the bid. If you just could explain the process and maybe even.
No, I understand that. I just want to make sure that's all. I'm trying to get it to the table.
Yep.
Wanted to jump in with it and just submit it. That's all. Just making sure it got out the bid.
Everything was right.
Yeah, okay. It's all I need.
I have the necessary calls for the assessment, pavement, fencing, in the left ward.
Thank you. So the process is the yellow building is coming down and there's electric where that goes overhead from, by that building that goes into the waterworks in the front. So that's got to be, there's a pipeline underground, so that's got to be disconnected. And then when that's taken down, we got to continue the fence backup for where that building was located to secure it in that area. And there's also a second building taken down in the waterworks itself. So she's still being, in this repair and the roof's falling in. So that's the approach there.
Any other questions?
Resolve that 2022 Portland city budget is hereby amended and $14,000 from account number, that's 8340.540.00 is hereby encumbered and shall be transferred to account number,
And again, thank Mr. Doby for making this happen. This is, they're going to use their in-house to do excavators that the previous administration had purchased to tear down the building. So we appreciate that. Roll call.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Selman?
Aye.
Councilmember Penella?
Aye.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels?
Aye.
Agenda item number 10, MOU can buy and between the city of Portland a city police benevolent association. Resolve, can I get a motion? I'm sorry. Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Scott? Resolve?
Therefore, well.
Yeah, that's good. Therefore is fine.
Therefore, it is agreed that the following permanent fixed schedule be implemented on January 4th, 2022 at now to come, consisting with the shift bid presented to the municipal police and eliminate the position of mandatory desk clerk. In witness whereof, the parties here to would cause this memorandum of agreement be executed on the date shown by each of their signatureers.
So if you saw the memorandum of understanding on this, this is for the well-being of the police officers, number one, on both counts. The second part of this is to take the desk officer so we can have another police officer out on the field and be able to help, you know, those needs and cover those times and not create the extra burden on their time for that, too. This is a pretty important thing to do. And I think that's something we long overdue. Scott, can I say?
Yes. It's long overdue that the officers of the city of Portland have been having these rotating shifts for one of the 40-plus years. And it's, it is for the health and safety of these officers to, to understand that it's better family time. It's very beneficial to them to have this. It's important to this community.
May I ask, have any comments, questions? Roll.
I'd just like to add that I agree with you, Councilman Carpenter, and that it's better releasing for our whole community as a whole because officers will be helping us make it. And it's about time.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Selman?
Aye.
Councilmember Penella?
Aye.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels?
Aye.
Mr. Fitz, are you in here? Is Mr. Fitz here?
Yes, sir.
Could I invite you up to sign this document, please? As a, as a, as a union representative? Just enough to finish it. Chief, you have to come to, please. All right. Thank you for that. That's an important task. The future of Apex Industrial Site, these are discussion items. We'll bring those up. On Apex Tools, Hooper Tools, I think there's various names out there. And I'll probably call it different names as well. You know, during a campaign, I made it a point to address the situation of former Apex Tools site. So I've already had productive conversations in the numerous partners, including the IDA, BBC, in the town of Porterville, the county, in helping to partner up to clean up the site. And I'll keep doing that. Our immediate focus is to gain site control for the environmental assessment of that property and develop a plan for the removal of the material. What we're seeing out there now is other people are putting their, dumping their trash there. We have rats infesting that area. Mr. Beckwood has certainly been, as well as Mr. Carpenter, in their area, that a lot of people have been upset about that site and it's getting out of control. And now with the warm weather and it's near the river, they're getting infestation. So we're taking, I, and address a very aggressive approach to get that property back. As we all know, it can't, it's very difficult to do with the laws that we have. We can't go back after these properties to do it. So this is a, a, a situation that we're actually, requiring the property to get site control. And I hope to come back to you next month with some recommendations for testing and getting that done so we can get that environmental testing done, so we can get the site. And also work on getting the site cleaned up with our municipal partners outside of that region. So I just want to make sure everybody's up to date on that and had some kind of idea of where we're going with that, how that is a central focus. And I hope to have resolutions by the next meeting with the resolve and, and an agreement with the owner of the property, the county in Porterville and others to get this to happen. I hope that happens. Search for a finance director. I put out numerous feelers out there. I actually got one resume back already on one for an interim. And that was more of a city administrator. I think Tom was there when I received it. I printed it off to get to read it. So when I get some more information back, I'll get to be able to do that. But we need to fill that position, obviously. It's, it's a huge need and a huge hurt there. But right now, the grants and all the information is coming to me and we're dealing with that appropriately. So, setting a public hearing for establishing zoning for the cannabis dispensaries. I think you all were invited to an informational meeting tomorrow, I think via Zoom. So if you have any questions about that. But I would like to entertain a motion to, to set a public hearing for that so we can do that. Mr. Carpenter, you made that motion?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Penella? You got all those in favor to do that?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you for that. And we talked about this briefly before, but soliciting applications for filling some vacancies in various boards and commissions. So I'll take that duly noted for Mr. Michaels. And I had a request from Mr. Tobin to do the housing council. So we'll accept any more of those that you have that are constituents in your neighborhood. Because again, as I always said, the answers are in our neighborhood. The people who live in the community know what's best and what works for that. So at any time, please solicit. I'll solicit those names from you to give those to do it. I know that ZBA is important because they're shorthanded. We had a situation where we had to fill those positions. That's important, too. So to make sure that we do cover all that. So please share those names and what their benefits are and have them fill out the application to do that. And one more thing, before the council members leave, for these, Mr. Jewitt has the signatures that you all have to sign for all the people that were appointed. Because that's the law requires that the council approve it. He has them there so you can get those. Make sure everybody signs them on the way out. Does anybody else have anything else they would discuss or bring up or want to address on all these items? Okay, so I'll take a motion for adjournment. Mr. Scott? Mr. Carpenter? And I'll just take this as, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed gets a stay by themselves. Well, thank you very much, all. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.